Good evening. I'd like to welcome the Knights Council meeting. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting in order and open the roll call.
Goodell.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Rusher.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
We need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7, 2014 regular council meeting.
Will it be approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under Communications, anything from the public unattended this evening? If not, Clint. People's Service Report.
We're getting a little closer on the water plant.
I hear that every time.
Well, right. But they did, they had sooner or later, they're pulling the back T-test tomorrow on the well side and everything in there. And those will go down to the lab that day. They're going to drive it down. And hopefully by late afternoon Wednesday, get the results back. Should pass and everything. And then, which that will include the filters, the well side filters also, the flow down line. They got that unplugged. So that's up and running. Put back together. Controls, power and everything's there. We'll probably start out and run it manual like we did with the spring site for a while till the automatic systems can get everything else tied into the system and everything. So just keep the fingers crossed. Line press is working a lot better. We made some adjustments on that. We held some training on it too. Just so everybody was on the same page. And that seems to be working a lot better now too. So IPT did get the lime slurry tank, the decant valve, they were like two foot short when they installed it. But they did get that fixed. So we've got a little bit more room in there now for that. Just electricians, electrical and computer stuff is a big thing now. Since our nice weather, I think our main breaks have slowed down just a bit. So not gotten any fluid.
Are we still finding some of the broken ones that we think from the winter the other week?
Yeah, yeah. We had our leak detection guy in here two weeks, two weeks ago. It was in between. We had a little good weather and he had like part of a day he got in and found three, I think, right off the bat. And we got two of those fixed. And we think the other one is not sure if it's the main or a service line possibly. So, but that one was a four inch, one was a two inch. So that definitely helped out. But we're going to have him come back again and hit all the two inch lines and four inch ones. That seems to be where a lot of the breaks are in that. So we'll just keep plugging away. Waste water plant, we've got the one clarifier. We got it cleaned out. We made a few little minor repairs from the ice. Got that back up and running. Just started doing the west one. Should have that down by the end of the week. That's going to take a little more repair. We're going to have to do some welding on it. It bent some steel on there. The ice did. IPT is going to come out and fix our digester, the decant valve stem. Ice literally took a piece of one inch stainless and just made an S almost in it. So it was down in position. So we can't, we can't raise it up. But they're going to come home and fix that. So and then eventually when we do the big gears, I think, isn't that Aaron? They're supposed to be this next fiscal year. On there. And we're going to replace the two gears on each clarifier too. So, and they built them, they can build them right to the exact same ones that are there now, the walker clarifier. Hopefully they'll just drop in is what they say. See when they get here. But other than that, we just keep pushing forward.
So if you're on manual on the well side, does that mean somebody's got to be there all the time or not?
Yep, 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 yep. It'll kind of, you know, be hand this and hand that. And it'll be staffed just like it is now. But the nice thing is we'll have our water production back up to where we should be able to quit our split shifts. So we'll have that extra water going. We should be able to keep up a little better with demand. So as right now, we're running between two 10 or 11 hour shifts is what we're running a day, seven days a week. So just to keep up.
And how much water is that a day?
Oh, was it? Running right now between 700 to 760,000.
A day.
Roughly, yeah, give or take. You know, like I say, you get a rainy day, cooler day, it'll drop off. The horses aren't busy in that. But once we get into the summer season, then things will crank up a little bit. So we'll be pushing eight, nine a day, somewhere in there.
So the two towers is about a day for us if we.
Yeah, yep, yep. And of course, then two now, they're going to be at some point. South tower has to be drained and all the controls that were at the north one will part. Basically the boxes are in there. That's all that's in there now. But that'll have to be drained. So then we may have to run an extra shift there just to keep up because it'll just be the one north tower is all we'll have here. So but it'll be interesting. So looking forward to seeing the end.
We still on May finishing or any, in the May, June, or are we any, or no, no plans anywhere?
Aaron, you can take that.
Um, yeah, the, I guess one good bit of, bit of good news that I would share is the, we passed along the concerns about the DNR fine. The mayor and I met with the governor a few days ago. Passed along the concerns to the governor and the governor passed along his concerns to the director. Got the call from the director and it appears as though the consent order, they are willing to amend the consent order to allow the city through the end of May before a fine would kick in. I'm still waiting to get everything in writing, but we did get an email that that would happen. And so I think that's some, some good news. The $10,000 fine would be not included then. But the completion, what we're saying is, is one of the big things that's part of the argument is what's completion? You know, well, is that seating or is it, you know, the ETHA system on the outside? Or is it meeting the requirements of the permit for the water production? And so the argument that Lance has made and that Steve with People's Service has made is that, you know, completion is actually just being able to meet the requirements of surface water or groundwater under the influence of surface water. And so with that, with that sort of standard, we will easily make May. We're going to be there probably in two weeks, you know, on the manual. Obviously getting the SCADA system and all that, it's going to take a little bit more. But, you know, we'll be able to do the turbidity testing and everything easily. So I think we'll, we'll make those. But, you know, as far as getting the groundwork completed, you can see they're making progress on that, but that's slow going. You know, they have to wait for the warm weather to do the, you know, the finishing on the walls. And so there's just going to be a lot of little things like that. But most of the process equipment, I think, is ready to go. And it's just some fine tuning on the inside. And then obviously the automatic systems is always, it's always difficult. That was my biggest complaint, I think, when I talked to the director was, you know, you can't control subcontractors and how responsive they are.
So you're like, they're on their own schedule to a point.
Will the generator, if we have an outage, run the spring side, the well side, neither right now, both?
Everything that's running on the spring side, it will, it'll take care of that. By the time we start the other side, that other side should be tied in too. Should be tied in too. So that's what they told me. So that's one of my biggest concerns to themselves.
Storms are starting, you just make sure things like that already.
We did get some more intake hoses for those big pumps and the lighter we.
The softer ones that we can bend down instead of the.
That one person can rest. And so those in this week sometime. So get those in. Like I said, we have one of our big pumps, we have a seal go out. So I've been in contact with the guy from RMS and he's going to get that fixed up and replaced. So lighter ones will definitely be easier. But we won't have to use them.
That's what we hope anyway.
So, yeah.
Okay. We got what we do.
Both sites will be able to by themselves, be able to handle the maximum amount of load that the city puts on at that? If either one.
Yep. The well side is kind of the workhorse. And then the spring side is kind of the one that, yeah, we'll just kick it in the top, everything off.
For a little bit and to kind of finish up and that. But. The water quality on both are about the same?
Yeah, they're close. They're different. They're two different sources. So there's a few little minor adjustments we have to tweak on the one side from there. But for the most part, they're.
Different, different.
Well, that's the shallow and the well and the springs. So one's got a little harder to water than the other. So we make adjustments on that to soften it to the, so they're the same. So.
You can't actually produce enough water on the spring side alone for summer use essentially.
For summer? You'd be running 24/7 and you'd be tough. It'd be tough. So, yep. So like I said, get that running next week or two. So fingers crossed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Under new business, discuss certificate of occupancy.
The zoning administrator, Boom Garden, brought to my attention that the certificate of occupancy that's in the code is never really used. Talked with Gloria about this and Gloria said she can't remember it really being used outside of structures in the floodplain or state programs or things like that where there's actually a request for the certificate of occupancy. So with that in mind, pass it along to Eric to kind of gut the section and figure out how to rewrite it and get it to where it needs to be. There's a memo that was in the council packets that kind of outlines what Eric had proposed. I guess, do you want to just real quick talk about?
Yeah, I think we all kind of opened that code section up and hadn't read it. I haven't, I mean, I'm familiar with certificates of occupancy, but it didn't fit with Humboldt. If you read, you probably don't have the old code there with you, but it says that no building or part thereof shall be erected, constructed, reconstructed, converted, altered, enlarged, extended, raised, moved, used, or changed from an existing owner or occupant to a new owner or occupant without first obtaining this certificate of occupancy. Well, you know, obviously just reading that, you can see that that isn't what we're doing. So what I did is when, in reading the code, and again, it's kind of a term of art because there are some lenders who, you know, what they want, they want somebody from the city to tell them this building, you know, occupancy is what throws you off. They want a certification from somebody on the city letterhead that said this complies with your codes. And we don't have, you know, building codes. We don't have electric codes, those kind of things. And so really what we have is a zoning code. And so what I did is I just tied it more into the building permit because right now our building permit's a little open ended. That same language, no building should be reconstructed, blah, blah. That's what introduces the building permit section, which makes sense if you're going to do something, you have to have a building permit. But we didn't have really any closure to that. We'd issued a permit, but there was no, you know, final review. And so when I, by doing the certificate of completion is what I'm calling it, the building permit on its face, not the new issue, but on the, on the building permit, there's a place for Steve or whoever in the city appoints to note this building permit, you know, was issued and it's been completed in conformity with whatever conditions we might have put on it. So, and then what, what Aaron pointed out there with Gloria is that in their work occasionally, DNR, they still use certificate of occupancy. It's like, it's a term of art. I don't think they even know what it means either. But they want one. And so, and then we kind of figured out what they really want. So we left language in there that says we're not, you know, if we need one, the building administrator still can do certificate of zoning. Sometimes you'll have a guy buy a building in town and he wants to know that he's not going to get, find out that he's out of compliance or something. So they call certificate of zoning, you see that. So basically certificate of compliance. And I just tied this up to make our building permit, you know, bring it back in so there's a final decision by the city that this permit was validly complied with and the building's done.
I think, I think Steve's fine with the language. I mean, you talked to Steve about this.
I think only initially that I knew, I was just checking whether he used that. I was kind of assuming he didn't.
But I had talked a little bit with him and I think he's fine with, with the additional work of checking on it. Actually, he really wanted to make sure that there was, that there was some backend to the building.
Yeah, it's kind of open.
Making sure that it was taken care of. The, the only thing is, I would say is going forward, it is, it is going to be a little bit more work because you're coming back on each one of these permits and doing kind of a more thorough review, I guess, than what was going on before where it was front ended. And then it was kind of, you know, if you drove by there, you'd notice it. Whereas now it's more, more of a process. So just a little bit more work, you know, I don't think it's a big deal, but it's, you know, something we have to make sure of. Know when there's, you know, with Steve and then the future zoning administrators.
Thank you, Eric.
So I'll bring that back as a code or as an ordinance of council.
Next, project update for the 2014 Street Seal Coat Project.
Yep.
Quite a lot of sheets. We're covering a lot of areas. So we have a big plan set already. I apologize.
How old's tree died?
Thank you.
I'll ask for one of them back. So what we've, what we've done so far is we got through actually all of the sections. We talked about 13 sections initially. And you'll notice if on the right, on the sheet index, you'll notice that six isn't in there. And 11 and 13 were not in there because those are the ones that we kind of eliminated in that initial discussion. So we've gone through, we've surveyed all of those. We've surveyed the intersections. We've surveyed the sidewalks there to see how we're going to tie in, things like that. Nick and I will actually probably be walking the intersections tomorrow because we're going to be in town for the pre-construction meeting. And we'll be checking which ones we can redo, which ones we think we have to redo, and which ones we think we can maybe eliminate too. A little, you know, if you, if you go to a sheet, there's a lot of them. But it says a couple of good examples. On ones that we can think right off the bat that we can eliminate are ones like DO7 is kind of a good example. Where 8th Street, we're not, we're not redoing and we're not needing to get into that. So instead stopping at that radius of 8th and 4th and before we get to the actual intersection. Now, we will assess that sidewalk at that time to make sure that it's nothing, that there's a major issue that we want to include that in. But we are able to stop at that standpoint because we're not actually doing anything to the true intersection. So we can avoid those type of costs, which we're locked in there before. So we're going through and we're going to tweak those different areas and see what we can do with those. We were happy we had pretty decent weather that we were able to get out there before trees were leaving up and get a lot of this survey work done, which was really good. And you've probably seen our guys walking around town often getting this work done. But it's going really well. We're really trying to hit a June bid letting time, which we think is probably pretty aggressive. But we think it's, it'd be really good to get that in, then get it on people's radar, give them adequate time. I really like to give them a little over two weeks, probably three weeks to take a peek at the project. Even though I think probably one of your big bidders probably has a pretty decent idea of what's going to entail on the project too. But we've definitely, when we've gone out and done the survey on the different areas, it's really reiterated that we're, we're doing the right ones after looking at pictures over and over again and going through these areas. So one other thing that we've talked about is when we put all these sections together, we have the ranking system here. What we're going to do is we're going to have more of a detailed cost estimate. The one thing that'll be up in the air is what is going to end up needing to be done on patching? Because that'll be actually decided when they go out and do the work and we'll walk and we'll mark each patch location. So we'll have an estimate in there. What we've also, kind of our idea is we're going to put together what we think is going to be right around probably the million range and then right around 1.2 and then above that from our estimates. So that we're going to be able to, when we get those bids back in, we're going to get the most bang for our buck. And that was kind of the intention why we probably, we've probably surveyed more than we're going to, we're going to get for that money. But we think it's good that we have that on. So if, if we do get great bids that come in, that we're not sitting there going, well, dang it, we should have, we should have done these other sections. So we've had really good luck doing that. And we've, a lot of times have gotten a lot more than we thought we've gotten. So sometimes I'm a little conservative, which is the worst thing. So any questions in regards to that, that plan set? Well, all you're really seeing right now is the overlay or the seal coat. What you'll, what you'll be seeing later on will be the sidewalks tied in with the different grades on those. And there'll probably be some sidewalk detail sheets to make sure that those are constructed. Because that's, that's the big push from everybody is to make sure that those are constructed to ADA clients. So any additional questions? It's a lot of sheets to take in at one point in time. So feel free to look over if you have questions or if you want to mark one on it too, go right on ahead. In regards to, just to follow up on the, on the other projects, so to keep kind of updated. Sumner, May 1, bid letting at 2:00 PM. I think we have eight plan holders right now. I know Sand is on there. And if you are interested, you can get that bidder's list. It's updated by the minute off of our website. You can go right on our website and click on that. It's kind of interesting. It'll be up on the login because our website is brand new. So it took me a little while to figure out where it was at because it's brand new from last week. So it's up on login. If you go to login, you'll see your projects come up on the left and you'll see Humboldt-Summer project right there. And you'll be able to click on that. And you can view plans, view plan holders, view any addendums. We haven't had any at this point. Right online. So it's kind of a neat little asset that you have. So that May 1, first bid letting, 7th Street subdivision, our pre-construction meeting is tomorrow. At, I think, 10?
Yes.
Yep, 10 AM. So we'll meet with the contractors, get them going. And we will issue a notice to proceed at that time too. Hopefully it'll be getting in there soon.
Let's, so that makes sense.
Yep, yep. Any questions?
Reading was the general?
Um, no.
Bob Topps is general.
Yep, Bob, that's the general. Readings will be the sub on the excavation. Yep. I think Reading, and Readings will really probably be the first one that you'll see on site because they'll be the ones digging the water main, which will be probably their first thing that they do on the project is dig in those and get those service lines in. So that's good for the subdivision also, get those connected. So we anticipate that. We'll probably take off here pretty quick as long as we don't get any big rains, which I heard you guys had a pretty decent one.
Nice rain.
Yeah, which is good. I mean, we do need the moisture too. Yeah. Any other questions? Good. Well, that's all I have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class B beer permit and semi-sale permit for NPC International corporate and brewing businesses Pizza Hut number 4,331. Is it in order, Gloria?
Yes, it is.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under resolutions, we need a motion to approve the fine proposed resolution number 2014-43. Resolution approving a central business district rehabilitation matching grant award and directing the city clerk to make payment as established in the program summary.
This grant would be to the Stobie Law Office for the improvement of sealed Worthington Building. The majority of work on the bill was actually to the interior where the exterior work included replacing the wooden shake style roofing that's on the facade with metal. It was over $2,000. In accordingly, we would be eligible for the full $1,000 matching grant.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the fine proposed resolution number 2014-44. Resolution approving an engineering services agreement from Quet Saddle Garber Associates Incorporated for the Humboldt Municipal Airport conventional hangar building construction project and authorizing the mayor to sign the aforementioned agreement.
This is kind of the engineering work for the project moving forward. Projects getting closest plans and specs and working on design with the FAA. I've had several conversations with the FAA about the project already, just getting site plans and things like that put together. Kind of an interesting situation. The FAA has had some turnover. So the expectations these days are different than the expectations that were just a year and a half ago, which were different than the expectations a little bit before the fact. So a little bit of a moving target, but looks like the project will stay on schedule for this fiscal year, federal fiscal year.
Is it 5% match or 10%?
This is the, this is the 10%, at least.
And these are, if I remember right, supposedly spoken for already?
Yes, he has.
Run it out or rent it?
David, Dave Dodger has said he has several other plans. I think it's like, I think there's two or three. He said he has a list form. So I think that there's.
This is just a single building now, what you're talking about?
Yeah, this is the.
Not a T-hanger.
Yeah, it's a conventional.
The mosquitoes bring this up because we're talking about.
Yeah, it's like 80 by 37 by 60 dimensions. Yeah, it's accommodated a much larger level than the one of those T-hangers.
Will be approved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Slater.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the fine proposed resolution number 2014-45. Resolution proposing the relocation of parcel of land in the city of Humboldt being Knights Boulevard, Blackbird First Edition to the city of Humboldt, Humboldt County, Iowa, as reported in the office of the Humboldt County Recorder and miscellaneous book one, page 311 and two, the subsequent conveyance thereof and three, affixing a date of a public hearing thereon.
Unfortunately, this is when we had to reschedule the hearing because if we did not make it onto the agenda, I will take responsibility for that. It's just simply an oversight of when we scheduled the public hearing and not getting it on the subsequent agenda. So had to reschedule and go through the motions in the time.
Will be approved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Shaw.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the fine proposed resolution number 2014-46. A resolution appointing Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as a paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, and approving the paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
Bankers Trust is always used for these services when we issue bonds. They have the financial pass-through for the city for bond payments. Take care of a lot of the busy work involved with bonds.
Will we approve? Second.
Roll call vote.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion that the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved.
It's just a required roll call vote to certify the city as issuing tax exemption.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Then next, we need a motion that the form of continuing disclosure certificate be placed on file and approved.
Again, required roll call vote. Again, required roll call vote to certify the city will continue to provide the required information concerning the city's finances to the purchasers of the bonds and the rating agency. We pay Scott Stevenson to, to help file all this big work. It's a, there's a lot of new requirements, or I guess, enforcement of requirements that's going on through the SEC with municipal bonds, making sure that that information's getting out there, because there's several cities, not in the city of Iowa, but across the nation, are not filing that information, or filing deceptive information, so, there's a real push to make sure that all that information's up to date and accurate.
Will we approve? Second.
Call vote.
Goodell?
Aye.
Slater?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Rusher?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the fine proposed resolution number 2014-47, resolution amending the resolution authorizing the existence of 1,200,000 general obligation capital loan notice series 2014A, and levying a tax for the payment thereof, passed and approved on March 3rd, 2014, by substituting a new resolution thereof.